All right. Good evening, welcome to the City of Highwood's Regular City Council Meeting for Tuesday, May 5th. It's a little after 7:30. I'd like to call the meeting into order. And Ms. Profi, if you do roll call, please.
Alderman Grace.
Here.
Walberg.
Here.
Fetterman.
Here.
Fiore. Peterson.
Here.
Slavin.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda this evening is we have the newly elected officials' oath of office. So if I can get all the newly elected aldermen to please step over here. We are graced with...
Are it two years and four years?
Yeah, two years and four years.
Split it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I would do, the two years together and the four years together.
And we have Judge Santi here this evening to do the swearing in.
Not the once or just like...
Yeah, go ahead.
They don't have to split that way.
Can we do it all at one time, yes?
What did you turn your back to the TV or to the...
You're gonna do it all at once?
Two years first and then four years.
Two years first and then four years. So we're doing two oaths.
So announce the names, I'll announce the names, Charlie, over there.
Okay.
You hereby swear and affirm that I will faithfully discharge my duties and responsibilities as Alderman for the City of Highwood in accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Highwood.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Highwood.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
Good morning, Judge.
Please be careful. Aye.
Aye.
Do hereby swear and affirm that I will faithfully discharge my duties and responsibilities as Alderman for the City of Highwood in accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Highwood.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Highwood.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
Congratulations, guys. Thank you, Judge.
Your pleasure, Judge.
I think we have one other Alderman who will be sworn in later in the week. He is unable to attend this meeting. That would be Alderman Mike Fiore. Moving on to the agenda, number four, review of minutes to be approved. In pre-session, we had the opportunity to review them. There were no questions or statements. So if I get a motion to approve 4.1, City Council Minutes for April 21st, 2015.
移到
Motion, and a seconded by Alderman Fetterman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes pass. 4.2 is the command of the whole minutes for April 21st, 2015. If I get a motion to approve those, please.
So moved. Second.
Slavin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five, we have appointments here for the Planning and Zoning Commission members. In the last session, we did combine the two to one commission. We have before us, I will read them all. We have 5.1, Pete Biagi, he is up for a one-year term. Number 5.1-2 is Anthony Bellotti, also a one-year term. 5.1-3 is Chris Meyer, one-year term. Sonia Fetterman is for a two-year term. Paul Martinez is a two-year term. Ferguson Mills is for a two-year term. Roman Belish is a three-year term. Frank Camparella is a three-year term. And Paul Fabre is a three-year term. We will need to take each one individually. If I'm not mistaken, it will be a roll call or all in favor?
Well, you could do it on voice vote.
Voice vote, fine. So we'll take 5.1. If I get a motion to approve Pete Biagi for a one-year term.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Biagi for a one-year term.
Motion is seconded by Peterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 5.2, Anthony Bellotti for a one-year term.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. 5.1-3, Chris Meyer, one-year term as well.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sonia Fetterman, we do have one Alderman who will be abstaining this evening, correct?
Yes.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then Paul Martinez, two-year term. If I get a motion for Paul, please.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Thank you. Alderman Fetterman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ferguson Mills, two-year term. Motion for him, please.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roman Belish, three-year term. 5.1-7.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 5.1.8, Frank Camparella, three-year term. Motion for that, please.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oops, opposed? And last, Paul Fabre, three-year term. If I get a motion for Mr. Fabre, please.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That completes that commission. Thank you.
They've got a lot of work ahead of them.
Yes, they do. Hopefully, they have a lot more.
Yeah, it'll be the busiest, couple of busiest terms in a long time.
And it's been suggested by Alderman Slavin that the members will be going through a commission, a construction course that our law firm will be presenting to them.
We'll do a training session for the commission over the next few weeks. We'll pick a date with Scott Corn.
And we'll make sure that each member has the zoning laws as well as the comprehensive plan since they were using both.
Just as a suggestion.
Yes.
The odds of getting nine bodies in there at once, maybe if you can, great, but if nothing else, offer two dates.
Sure.
Just so people, you know. Because I would like to see everybody have that.
Absolutely.
We'll do that. We'll make sure we get everyone.
Next item on the agenda is the warrant. The approval of the warrant list dated 5-5, 2015. We went through that in pre-session. There were no comments or any issues that were brought up by staff. If I get a motion to approve the warrant list, please.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Motion is seconded by Alderman Fetterman. Roll call, please.
Alderman Grace.
Yes.
Walberg.
Yes.
Fetterman.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Slavin.
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, sorry, I'm looking for something here. Public input for items not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council at this time? This would be the ideal time. Yes, sir. And just as a reminder, there are a five-minute limit on the time for that.
My name is Jason Noga. I'm a firefighter/paramedic here in Highwood. I've been with the department for 11 years. I'm also the union president. I just wanted to say a couple of words tonight and introduce some people to you, give them an opportunity to speak also. Some of the things to consider with the path that the council has taken with the department. In the 11 years that I've been here, I've been looking out for the safety and well-being of the citizens of Highwood. And it's in that spirit that I continue. And I just, I think there's some things that you should consider. I don't think you're going to get quality employees with any contract services with any of the companies that are out there. I personally did work for one. And I think that the people who are quality leave those places. But this council not only is taking the path to contract out, but you're also going with the lowest bidder, which you're not going to get quality employees at all in that situation. I'd like to share a phone call that I had before I actually had it over here from Dr. Stanley Levine, and he said I could quote him. He made a call to the firehouse, and we had gone around, and we started filling out a petition, just to let you guys know that the citizens do agree and do want the fire department that they've had with the standard of care that they've been given. And he wanted me to stress a word to you, it's teamwork. And whether it's on a team, he's a surgeon, and he talked about his surgical team, or the team that we work with. With a lot of the terms that are thrown around, everybody's talking about ISO ratings lately, without, I think, any idea of what actually goes into that ISO rating. Our ISO rating just came out again. We're the same ISO rating as Highland Park. You guys are getting the same quality of service that the citizens of Highland Park are getting, at a fraction of their cost. You're already receiving a bargain and a return on your money. By taking away our full-time employees, we do not have the building blocks to establish that level of service that we can continue into the future. None of these, and you'll hear it from the firefighters from Frankfurt, none of these contract employees are interested in having anything to do with the city. They're just biding their time. We need the building blocks for the future. That's why we have achieved a Level 3 rating with our ISO, because of the firefighters that came before us, the other full-timers. When I started here, we were nine employees. We're down to seven without a chief. We've already made huge cuts, and we're still surviving. We never asked the council for anything. As long as I've been here, we have always come over here and given, and given, and given. And this one time, all we're doing is just asking for the relief of having seven full-time employees. That's all we want. We're not asking for a lot. It's just enough. That is the bare minimum that we can get by with. That's making our schedule work. That's having enough people to train. That's having people to fill when other full-timers go out. That's having those responsible, trained individuals here all the time to take care of the city. That's all we're asking for. There are some firefighters here from the Frankfurt Union and President Pat Devaney from the AFFI that would also like to address you.
Sure thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Paul Consella. I'm a lieutenant and former union president at Frankfurt Fire Protection District, which is a little way south of here. Our district had started with the Kurtz Contract Services, and we have successfully transitioned into a full, full-time, all-full-time department. Our last contract member just left in April. In the experiences I've had, I've been there over 15 years, both part-time and about 10 years full-time, five years part-time before that. We were always, it seemed like we were always behind. We were constantly, the last place in public safety that you want to have poor teamwork would be in a fire department. That is not, you have to work well together. You have to have a good crew. You don't want to put a second tier in there and make it even harder to work. And that was what we were always up against. The rate of turnover we had was tremendous. There was times that you'd have people working two and three weeks for you, and then they'd be gone. And until, we actually went with less people because we felt it was so dire to be able to train an individual and have him stick around for the next 10, 15, 20 years, as opposed to two, three weeks. Granted, they have, they are quote-unquote certified through the state of Illinois, or maybe they are certified as EMS or licensed as EMS to provide service, but they are not to the quality, they use it as just a stepping stone. The amount of turnover was tremendous. We couldn't, we see, and I commend your fire department you have right now with the ISO rating you have. That is much better than ours, and we have a lot more of equipment, a lot more people, and spend a lot more money trying to do the exact same job. Some different territorial things, but still, we are not up to that caliber, and hopefully we can be. And now that we've had this huge weight lifted off our chest with this revolving door that we had with the Kurtz, you have a company that's coming in trying to sell you a product, of course, they're going to tell you everything good about it. But the real deal was, we were one of their first, and we were one of their first to go too, because we couldn't survive anymore. We could not continue on and increase our level of service. And you don't want to put a second class in there and make that transition. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, for allowing me to briefly address you this evening. I'm Pat Devaney. I'm president of the Associated Firefighters of Illinois. The AFFI is the statewide association that represents 15,000 firefighters and 220 locals across the state. Of the services that we provide our members, advocacy, both in Springfield and assisting them at the local level like this, is certainly probably the leader. Part of that advocacy is educating people about the job. Some people have a notion about firefighters that may have existed decades ago about sitting around the firehouse waiting for a call. I can assure you, and some of you I'm sure know, and others might be less sure, that that does not exist today. Besides responding to fires, our members are performing life-saving activities that really mean the difference between life and death in emergency medicine as paramedics. They're doing auto extrication. They're doing specialized rescue. They're doing hazardous materials, getting ready to respond for incidents involving homeland security. It involves and requires a great deal of training and experience. In furtherance of that principle, we have worked very hard in Springfield to make sure that the requirements for hiring firefighters and paramedics are very, very advanced. They are a high level of requirements and criteria that one needs to meet to be required to do the job. There's a written test that's required to demonstrate a cognitive ability. There's a physical agilities test that's required to make sure you're physically capable or performing a demanding job. And psychological requirements, background checks. All of those are required only for public employees hired and commissioned through your board and fire and police commission. They are not required if you go the route of hiring private contractual employees. They may tell you that they meet standards, but with the revolving door you just experienced and just heard about, that is not always the case, and we know that firsthand. We believe this board has a moral obligation to provide a publicly provided service, a top-notch service, to the citizens of Highwood that really can mean the difference between life and death. That's a moral obligation. But we also believe that you have a legal obligation. I think some of you, and you may have just discussed it, contractual obligations, know that there are some issues with your current collective bargaining agreement. You know that there's some issues with the Labor Relations Act and your ability to contract out. But probably the one most applicable, and I don't know if it's well-understood because it's only been on the books since 2008, and we have not had to exercise our powers under it, is the Substitutes Act, which says you may not substitute a qualified commissioned employee, public employee, with one that has not qualified for regular employment. And qualified for regular employment means that they were hired using that competitive process in the Board of Fire and Police Commission Act that was put in place to make sure that people weren't hired in a corrupt way, or patronage wasn't applied. So there's definitely legal hurdles to your proposal. How do I know this? I've been dealing with this situation, a very similar proposal in North Riverside. We've been in the Cook County Circuit Court since June. We have multiple arbitrations, unfair labor practices, and a grievance arbitration that has cost my 14-member unit there, not seven, tens of thousands of dollars, and I speculate it's caused the village hundreds of thousands, or will end up before it's concluded, depending on how far it's appealed. Any proposed savings that you are speculating you might achieve, I suggest will not be realized because of the legal component of this battle. And I'm here not to make threats, and I hope we never get to a single arbitration, a single legal proceeding. But I just want to make sure that everyone in this council knows that the 15,000 members of the Associated Firefighters and the 300,000 members of the IFF in DC stand squarely behind our unit here in Highwood. In North Riverside and Cook County Circuit, we have our attorneys, we have the IFF's attorneys, we have the Labor Board attorneys who are supporting our position, and we have the Attorney General that is defending the Labor Board's ruling on a very, very similar proposal. And I would encourage all of you to review it before you go forward and make a decision on this proposal. Again, it is my hope that we never get to that point. I can tell you, our unit stands ready to sit down and solve these problems. We've done it in other places where we make tough decisions to make sure that we have the best people providing service to the citizens of Highwood. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
How are you, ladies and gentlemen? My name is Mike Byrne. I'm a part-time policeman here. My background was, I was a Chicago police officer for 28 years. I retired as a watch commander in the busiest district in the city of Chicago on the South Side. I'm a little rough around the edges. I was a homicide detective. I was a narcotics sergeant. I worked every phase of heavy-duty police work there is. Had a lot of contact with firefighters. And I got to tell you, since I've been, or it's only been like a year and a half, or maybe a little bit less, I've never seen a better relationship between police and firemen than I've seen here. And again, I'm not speaking on behalf of the Police Department. I'm not speaking on behalf of Chief Wentz. I'm just telling you how I feel. I went, let me give you an example. I've still got that Chicago mentality, I guess, you know, an accent too. But we had a job. In Chicago, everything's a job, right? So we go to a job, and it was an ambulance call, and the fire truck and the ambulance show up, and I show up, and I think I was with Marco. We went there, and there was obviously a very young person in the back room, a Hispanic person was dead, maybe about 30 years old. You know, as soon as I saw him, I knew he was dead. These guys show up, and when they show up, they worked on him for about 20 minutes. Then they got him in the ambulance, they worked on him for about another 20 minutes, knowing that there was only a slight chance that they're going to bring him back, or no chance, for that matter. Unfortunately, he died. Or he was dead. I came on a job in Chicago in 1972, and I had been shooting a fireman's strike under Jane Byrne. Jane Byrne was a person that loved the police, and she didn't like the firemen. And it created a lot of problems between us. And it took years and years and years and memories for it to go away, but it took a long time. You don't see this here. Now, if you hire this company, or whatever it is, which I'm not really familiar with it, they're not going to know the nooks and crannies. They're not going to know what the town is about. They're not going to know the people in the town. They're not going to know anything about the town. Today, you'll have one firefighter. Another day later, you might have another guy. They're not going to be the same people all the time. They're not going to be professionals like these guys. And again, like I say, I'm not trying to say I know everything, because I sure don't. I know a lot of you aldermen here, they see me, they talk to me. But I do know one thing. This is one of the finest fire departments you'll ever get, and you'll never get anything like it to replace it.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm going to make it really quick this time. I just want to say, the safety of the people of Highwood is not a situation in which you bargain shop. By taking away our qualified firefighters and replacing them with bargain basement, entry-level firefighters in training, I think you're doing a disservice to the citizens and the community, and the fine men and women of our current fire department. I'm asking you, please, don't tear this community apart. Keep it together. Don't do this. We don't want it. Nobody really wants it. I understand you're trying to save money, but save it another way without risking our community. We want our fire department, and we don't want to see a different person come in for three months, gone, they're going to be, you know, to a fire department. This is not a time to bargain shop. I'm just asking you guys, please, no bargain shopping when it comes to the safety of our community. And the people that come here for the farmer's market, or someone gets hurt, we want to have a top-notch fire department. We deserve it. Our taxes are very high, too. Okay? And I understand you want to cut tax, we've got to do it a different way. Please, keep the fire department. No bargain shopping with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
My name's Jonathan Weber. I'm a firefighter/paramedic with the City of Highwood. A very proud firefighter of this department. As you know, I worked for Kurtz prior to coming here. I left that company for reasons, many reasons. If it was a great company, and I thought I should stay there for my career, I would have. There's issues when it comes to contracting. I've witnessed it firsthand. My brothers at Frankfurt have witnessed it firsthand. That's why they went ahead and got rid of it. They agreed with their district that there was not a standard of care that was being provided, a high level that should be provided. And we don't want to see that happen in this community. I was going to, I'm trying to move out this direction to be closer to this community. So if there's a fire when I'm off shift, I can come in. I can be here for these guys, for this entire community, whether it's a business or a resident. I want to be here. I plan on staying here for a long time to provide that high level of care. I've gone through a lot of training. I've used Kurtz as a stepping stone. Majority, everybody, I'd say, if I had to put a number on it, I'd say about 90% of the people use it as a stepping stone. Nobody wants to stay with a contract service, and you get that high rollover and turnaround, and that guaranteed will be seen if it comes to this department. There shouldn't be a profit made when it comes to contract, or when it comes to public safety, whether it's fire or police. There shouldn't be a profit made. Corners get cut when that happens. Without a doubt, those will get cut. You will see corners cut. These guys here, we provide a high level of service. We truly do. And I want to see that in this community. If you go with a contract, you're going to see that standard drop. You're going to see citizen complaints. You're going to have businesses complain. I guarantee that will happen. For me to get this job, I went through a lot. When I was a Kurtz employee, all I did was a simple background test and a physical, like if you were to go to the doctor any time of the year. Simple. For me to get hired here, I tested for my position. 35 guys showed up and sat in this exact room here for a job. 11 people made that list. 11 people qualified out of that 35 people. There's no test when it comes to Kurtz. I've gone, I've studied. I personally, I went for my associate's degree to better myself. We took that ACT-type test. It's about 150 questions. I had to take a physical agility test called the CPAT. It's a timed course that you have to complete within 10 minutes. That's not required of a Kurtz employee. I had to complete that. There's contract guys that I know that cannot get hired full-time due to the fact that they cannot pass that test. Those people are in that company as we speak. You want those people coming over here that can't pass a test? When I was over at Frankfurt, there was a person that worked there that, with an air pack on and carrying a high-rise pack, a hose bundle of two-and-a-half-inch hose, couldn't walk up the stairs. Couldn't pull that off. That person wound up leaving because they realized that they couldn't do the job. But the fact that they were there at the department putting our brothers at risk is a huge safety issue for the community and to the guys that we work with. I don't want to go into a burning building knowing that somebody can't pull me out in case if I were to accidentally somehow go down. and to the guys that we work with. I don't wanna go into a burning building knowing that somebody can't pull me out in case if I were to accidentally somehow go down. We have a dangerous job. Without a question, this is a dangerous job. And I wanna make sure that the brother behind my back or sister has my back. That I know if there's two patients, two victims laying on the ground, I can grab one, they can grab the other one, and I'm not pulling two people out while they're standing there in the lawn. I don't want that. That's a huge, huge issue. I sat at the doctor for a psychiatric evaluation. That's also required of us with the state. For three hours, I sat in front of a doctor to make sure that I was with it in the head. We deal with death. We deal with ill people. Those are huge issues. We have to be mentally and physically ready for all of that. And with Kurtz employees, you don't get that mental to make sure that they're with it. For three hours, I sat in front of a doctor, went over questions. He interviewed me. He drilled me to make sure that I'm with it. And that's why I'm standing here today, because I earned this position. All these guys on our department have earned their position. I was, I'm here because I was picked from the top of the list. Russ and Charlie, who were terminated from this department, are amazing people. Between the two of them, they have 13 years experience together. You're not gonna see that when it comes to a contract employee. I was hired, I had nothing. It was my, it was my first job in the fire service. I had nothing. Multiple, multiple people do that exact same thing. That's what you're gonna bring into this community, and you're going to drop that standard of care that we have so high. Like our union president, Jason, had stated, we're an ISO rating three. I don't know if you guys understand what that means. That is huge. If we were a 10, this town would be unsureable. We were at a four prior to this. With the hard work and dedication of the members of this department, we are now a three, which is comparable to what Highland Park is. That's what Highland Park is. So, we can walk over there and say, hey, this is, we're the same as you. Issues with mutual aid.
You know, I'm gonna need to ask you to just summarize it.
Okay.
Just real quickly. Sorry, five minutes or more than.
No, no. Highland Park is having issues with this as well. They don't wanna bring their guys in knowing that they're contract employees. There's gonna be issues along those lines with mutual aid companies coming in, because they don't know. If their guy goes down or something happens, is somebody else gonna be there in order to pull them out, like the issues that I have? So, I, I, you guys truly need to overview all of this information, because it is critical when it comes to the safety. And I believe that everybody in this room here worries about the safety of this community, and that they should. And if they do not, they shouldn't be sitting here as of today. One last thing, I also had an in-depth background check as well. Kurtz, I got my, I got the background check back within a day. It took a week here for me to get my background check. They made sure that I had no criminal record, no DUIs, no anything. They wanted to make sure of that. And that's what we got here. With Kurtz, you're not going to get that. You guys need to be very aware of all these things that I've talked about, and everybody else that is about to talk and has talked. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nice job.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council this time?
I've never been to one of these meetings, so it certainly doesn't appear that you address questions here, do you?
Not typically. Not, this is more of you to bring your points to us.
Okay. Well, I am gonna throw out some food for thought for you all, because they are concerned.
Oh, yeah. Real quick, just, just your, first of all.
Laurie Goldstein.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay. And these are questions and things, you know, I'd like you to think about, and per, you know, I'd certainly like to hear more about or pursue further. But my understanding is, is that there are three people in favor and three not, in terms of the outsourcing of our police department services. And I guess I'd be curious to, to know, or to at least put it on the record, to find out if any of you all have a personal or professional relationship with anybody at Kurtz. Because I have read things in terms of municipalities that have gone with them where that has been a case. The, another thing is, is if we outsource our services, what impact do you have on the service provided by Kurtz? If, if they change or move out an employee, or let's say an employee mishandles something that, that we don't like as a community, they're a Kurtz employee, what can the town do to impact that, if anything? You lose that control over a potentially negative impact that could have impacted the community that we live in. I don't know what their turnover rate is. It sounds like it's very high. And, you know, being a businessperson, I know you need consistency in terms of your personnel. If you've got a high turnover rate, how are you gonna ensure that? How can Kurtz ensure that? And I, the answer is, they can't. And I'd, I'd be curious to know, and hope you all, you all have checked out, what their turnover rate is. Because that's a really important factor in terms of considering them as, as someone who will be in our town protecting us. The other things, you know, that's, that I'm curious about are the terms of the contract. I mean, you know, I, my understanding is, and I could be wrong, it's a three-year contract. What does that start out as, and what are the increases year over year? The other thing, are there municipalities on the North Shore or communities similar to ours that are outsourcing these services? And I guess the last thing I would wanna know is, has Kurtz ever been sued? And I do, I'm aware of one suit. I did not find other ones. When, why, and what was the result of the suits? So, those are things, you know, I would ask that you consider. Because now, as a community, you can have an impact if things go awry. And I mean, they do, we're all human. They can go awry. But if Kurtz is managing that, what do you do? You're dependent upon them to rectify the problem. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, please.
Mr. Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Jeremy Stukel. I am a lieutenant with the Frankfurt Fire Department, also the vice president of our firefighters local. I strongly urge you guys to not contract out your services. Not necessarily speaking with Kurtz, but any type of contract service, whether it be Metro, PSSI, whoever have you. You guys heard all the reasons. High turnover rate. Despite what Mr. Vanna stated in, in the papers, of which I read, that you're, that you're getting people with experience of 15 years. Downright lie. You're, you're getting people maybe a week. Just got their medic license. Put it, put them in an ambulance. Have them go run a full arrest. That sort of thing. I mean, that's exactly what you're getting. You're getting people who don't care about your town, your assets, your rigs, your equipment. They're just here. It's just a warm body in a seat. That's exactly what it is. We've had many instances in Frankfurt with these individuals, these contract guys. The minute you try to do something with them, rectify the situation, discipline them if they do something wrong, they start crying about, oh, this is harassment. You guys are harassing us because we're union bullies, per se. It's just problems that you don't wanna have. You're gonna create a separation within your fire department. And as the lady just said, you guys need to have, public safety, needs to have cohesion, right? It, it needs to be one unit. You can't be working three, two, three, four different groups and, and, and be separated. Job's too important. Lives are, are, are on the line. It's just not about, as President DeVaney said, sitting around watching TV in the recliners. There's, there is a lot more to it. We're in, we're in it a lot deeper as far as what we do. We successfully negotiated our contract away with our district. Our trustees seen it. If you guys had any questions, contact them. Find out what they had to say. They seen the light. We moved it in the right direction. And that's all I gotta say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I say one more?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Just real, real quick, I, and I forgot about it and just came to mind. A current Highwood police officer and Highwood firefighter, Anthony Napolitano, was, who's a Chicago fireman for the last 10 years. Before that, he was a Chicago policeman in the Austin District for five years. He had asked me to express his support for the fire department. And Anthony's an expert fireman, and I think even all the firemen I talked to, they learned a lot from Anthony. And Anthony was just elected. Do you all admit a 41st word in Chicago?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello. My name is Nixon Zare. I'm the president of the Frankfurt Fire Fighters Union. The reason we negotiated away our contract, because it didn't work anymore for us. It was at a time in our district, they looked at it and said, we had too many issues with it. Our quality of service was way better from our full-time employees. Our contract employees were young. They were green. They didn't know what they were doing. Inside the station, there was this animosity between the two different sections of employees. They looked at us as, you make more than us, why don't you do some more work? We worked all the time. We trained. We'd ask them to train. They'd tell us, no, they're on the ambulance. These are all things that went on inside of our department. So, we're here to tell you, this does not work. We've been through it. We've had the hardships. We've beat our heads against the wall to be the best fire department in the area, and this is what we had to deal with. Other than that, my position in the fire department, I'm an engineer and paramedic. These individuals did not take care of the equipment the way they were supposed to. They had no pride and ownership of that apparatus that they're on, so they wouldn't put fuel in it. They wouldn't take care of it. They wouldn't wash it. You'd have to, every morning, have to get up and say, hey, guys, wash your ambulance. And they'd look at me like, who are you to tell me what to do? I'm an engineer. That's my job, is to make sure things are taken care of. At one point, they lost some auto pulse batteries. They're 500 bucks a piece. They left them on the back of an ambulance. They were destroyed. They didn't really care. We couldn't discipline them. They told us, we work for Kurtz. So, I'm just here to reiterate all the things these guys have told you. You guys have a really big decision in front of you. Do you wanna bring your standard of care down, or do you wanna bring it up to what it could be and what it is now? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
So, other than all the reasons that you guys have just heard, if you guys are still torn, I think you should bring it to the people and have a referendum like you did for the fire, or for the police department years ago. And we'll see what the people have to say.
Okay.
I just may add really quick.
I wanted to have the last word.
We've gone around to, uh...
Just keep it within a few seconds.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to let you know that we have a petition going around, like Jay had stated. Today, we went to pretty much all the businesses in Highwood. We have a lot of signatures. We've gone, we've been really out just two days. We have majority of the, we've hit Fort Sheridan. Nobody even knew about this, which is quite disappointing. This is a huge issue. It, it's the safety of this community. They need to know. So, we're getting that word out to them of what's going on, but we have a lot of residents behind us, and there's a lot of businesses that are for the way things are now, and we wanna keep that, so.
Okay. If there's nothing further, we'll move on with the agenda? Yep. Okay. Let's see, mayor's report. We have nothing this afternoon. Community reports? Anything on the community reports?
I think we've handled most of the long-term planning in the council hall.
Great. Treasurer's report will be in two weeks. Clerk's report?
No.
Although you were busy this week with the third graders from Red Oak, if I'm not mistaken.
You were.
I was busy. And then this week, we do have Oak Terrace will be visiting the city of Highwood. They're visiting the police department, the admin, and I think they had the fire trucks here last time as well. Clerk's report, nothing. Unfinished business. There is no new business for this evening. 13.1, it's consideration of an ordinance amending section 7 dash 4 dash 5, one-way streets and alleys. On the street code, to create one-way restrictions on Lakeview Avenue and Clay Avenue to accommodate additional parking in the downtown district. I believe there is a modification to that.
Modification from, to west, yes?
It's the direction.
West to east.
Let's take two motions.
North to south.
Okay.
Thank you. North to south on Lakeview.
Yeah.
Can we get first a motion to modify the draft ordinance to reflect the change?
I'll make that motion to modify the draft ordinance to make that change.
And I'll second.
You can do all in favor on that.
Okay. All in favor on the modification?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I'll make that motion to...
That should be a motion to waive first reading and to approve the ordinance as modified.
As modified. Okay. I'll make that motion to waive first reading and read as modified. And approve as modified, sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Fetterman's second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Fetterman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Slavin?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Falberg?
Yes.
Okay. Next, 3.2, consideration of ordinance amending section 5 dash 7 dash 1. This would be the noise of the city of Highwood code to permit hours in which live music can be played in the business and residential districts. We have a modification for that one as well.
I think we should call for a motion to modify the draft ordinance to change section 20 to reflect that the live music refers to outdoor music.
Would be live outdoor music.
So, it's just live outdoor music that will have a...
I'll make that motion to approve the modification.
Second?
We have a motion and a second.
And all in favor on the modification?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. If I get a motion to approve the ordinance 5 dash 7 dash 1.
I think waive first reading.
And waive first reading.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. And this ordinance came about so the businesses would have a better understanding of when they can and cannot have live music throughout the city, the same as now residential as well. Outdoors. It goes until 11 o'clock on weekends, sorry, and 10 o'clock during the weekdays. I think that's what it says. Yeah. So, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Slavin?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Fetterman?
Yes.
Falberg?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Okay. Next on the agenda is consideration of resolution authorizing the execution of a law enforcement mutual aid agreement and existence and formation of the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System by intergovernmental cooperation. Get a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second for the intergovernmental agreement?
I'll second it.
For the police. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Falberg?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Slavin?
Yes.
Fetterman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Final agenda item is 13.4. It's the consideration of a resolution approving and accepting an ARC recommendation regarding amperon care at 50 Pleasant Avenue. They are looking to put pergola in the back. If I get a motion to approve that, please. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Slavin?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Fetterman?
Yes.
Falberg?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Okay. We did have executive session. We have no action coming out of that. Motion to adjourn.
Make that motion. Second.
Favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, let's go. Same?
Before you leave?
Yes. Oh, yes, sign all this stuff.
You have to sign your oath.
James, would you like that, Penn?
Doing all that.